Welcome, everybody. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, the invocation will be given by Pastor Jeremy Hyde from the Point Church. It's now across the street. Thank you for coming, Pastor. Executive pastor, I might say.
Yes, that's correct.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this community. Thank you. I thank you for all those who are gathered here this evening. We ask for your presence, your wisdom, and your guidance for all those who are a part of this meeting tonight, and I pray for your continued guidance for this community and your continued blessing on it. Pray that you bless the discussion that's had tonight and our leaders. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I remember for adjustment approval of May 7th, 2019 meeting agenda, Mayor Portem.
Motion to adopt the May 7th, 2019 meeting with no changes.
Second.
Motion made in second all favor.
Aye.
Post. Pass unanimously. Thank you for the... I remember five is a public comment period. Now, we've got a big, big meeting tonight, and I would ask anybody and everybody who's going to speak, again, try to keep your comments within three minutes, okay? I'll remind you if it goes too far. At this point in time, we open the public hearing and our public comments and ask for Kim Tillery. Kim? There you are. Come on down, introduce yourself. Name and address, please.
I'm actually myself and Ms. Kim. I'll give it Stephanie, I'll mention.
All right. Okay. That's fine. Then introduce both of you, please.
My name is Susan Morgan. I live at 508 Wildwood Farmway in the Wildwood Community. And we were supposed to have a PowerPoint for you guys, but someone had a baby, and so they're probably changing diapers instead of being here tonight.
No problem.
I ask the Wildwood Community, though, to please stand. I think there's a parking issue, too, outside. So I want to just remind the council that the residents on the Wildwood Farmway along the access road never had an opportunity to meet with Lowe's before the master plan, so we were not informed of the meetings and were not able to speak about the need for a fence below the Lowe's store or a gate at the access road. In August, I had walked into Town Hall, though, and met with Melissa Sigmund, and she stated that a fence would be going around the perimeter of the entire area adjoining the residential property. But when the master plan was released, it was obvious that wasn't exactly the case. So we are asking still for a solid, tall fence below Lowe's to act as a sound barrier and provide additional security and privacy. We asked for the trees at Lowe's curb below the building to be evergreen instead of semi-deciduous, again, as a sound barrier. And Travis with Lowe's states that they're still considering these items. We would like to hear from them today on these issues. I spoke with Rachel Jones about the need for a gate, and Lowe's did incorporate a metal swing gate with knock-lock, knock-box locking system into the plan. It provides no security or noise control or a visual barrier down the access road into Wildwood Community. When I spoke with Wayne Strickland at the fire department, he stated he would be okay with a solid gate as long as it had the same type of locking system. Rachel was asked by the council at the last meeting to please find out what type of gate the fire department would allow. We need to hear from Rachel on that. She has heard from the fire department, so we would like a solid gate. Rachel also stated at the planning board meeting that she would stipulate that the access road in Easement be abandoned when it's no longer needed by the fire department. We want it stipulated tonight that whatever portion of the access road can be abandoned when the fire department doesn't need it, that it will be abandoned. And we need Rachel to talk about that as well tonight. And Travis, via a phone call I had with him, said that they would be able to and be willing to close the rear buffer yard with evergreen plants once that access road is no longer needed, and then we would be able to keep the public away from our backyards and the residents having a sense of separation from the commercial property. It may take a while, but we still would like it once it's available. We need these items for security, privacy, and noise buffering. Some of the homes are only 100 feet from the unsecured areas below Lowe's stores. The access road is already a problem with pedestrian loitering, littering, unauthorized vehicles, dirt bikes, drunkenness seen on camera, and the police have been out several times to no avail. These issues may very well increase with more transient people coming to the area because of the commercial properties. At Town Council meeting on March 26th, Courtney, a planning board member, confirmed that the residents spoke before hearing Wegmans regarding their development, design, and their business operation. And Courtney did go on to say that the planning board supports the residents and their request for berm and dense plantings. We need the greenway removed from the plan to accomplish this. Wildwood did submit a petition to the Town Council with over 100 signatures in just three days to show the support for the need for the community and its residents. At the Town Council meeting, it was decided and approved that an additional buffering needed to be placed around the café and the side parking lot to block view of the pool. We do not see that on this updated plan that was currently submitted by Lowe's on any of the three options. These plants do need to be there, and they need to be evergreen so that there's low-hanging branches, because tree trunks do not make good visual screening, so they'll be able to see right through to the pool. The Town Council tabled the greenway location and affected buffer, directing Parks and Rec to specifically get together with engineering to manage a crosswalk at the right-in, right-out turning lane in order to place the greenway along the original proposed route shown on the future greenway map. Leanne said that they would rather have no greenway than run it in that original proposed area. And the Town Council also asked that Parks and Rec look at getting more plantings as better buffer between the greenway and the residents located below the stores. They did not add more plants, but instead took critical plants from the top near the loading docks that are needed for sound barrier, visual barrier, and as a light, as a buffer for the lights from the parking lot and the buildings. So light poles are 32 feet high, and there is a parking lot between the buildings that the lights will shine into the second-story windows that face the buildings. Without a dense buffer, the lights shine through. Wildwood does not have its own dense buffer, as the town may have implied at the last meeting. We would request that Lowe's consider donating trees to the HOA to dent, to create a denser berm or denser buffer in this area. There's no room for the greenway in the buffer area, so it needs to be removed if we're going to give the residents dense buffering. The master bedrooms are in the back of the houses, and these lights that I just talked about will be on until midnight, because Wegmans stores are open until midnight. The Lowe's in Apex has a dense buffer. The Lowe's in Cary has a dense buffer. They each have residential properties nearby, and they have a significantly better buffer than what we have. The town of Holly Springs created lawful ordinances to protect the residents when a community business sits on top of the residential community. The town believes the buffer is critical for these incompatible situations. C-150 plantings. We believe there are violations, that the greenway takes up the buffer yard and it goes nowhere. We would like the town and the town's attorney to elaborate on why they believe that there is no violation. Now, regarding the greenway plans themselves that were submitted by Lowe's, Stephanie and I met with members of the town yesterday, and they did finally show in option C on the lower portion, the improvement we were requesting before we knew about the Wegmans situation.
Ms. Burgin, excuse me. You're at seven minutes. Can you kind of summate, please?
Okay. Well, the greenway, we would like it to run on the dirt road rather than take down more trees. And we would like, instead of the greenway behind the homes, that Lowe's get credit for the greenway space they're running on Wildwood Farmway, and they're willing to widen Ralph Stevens Road sidewalks to greenway space, and we believe that is better than taking the critical buffer from the residents. And there's connectivity using Adams Farm when it's developed, that they'll be able to connect from Wildwood Farmway and use our sidewalks and then go up to the greenway space that Lowe's can create. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm Kim Tillery. I live at 520 Wildwood Farmway. So I'm praying that y'all hear us, and we were spending a lot of time coming out here voicing our concerns.
Thank you, Kim. Karen King. Same thing? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Christine Quante. I saw you. There you are.
Hi there. I'm Christine Quante with the Holly Springs Chamber of Commerce, 344 Wally Street across the street. I wanted to come here tonight on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and our Board of Directors and our many members, and thank you all as a town for our leaders in our town, as well as Randy and his complete and entire staff, for helping us put together now for what was over 10 months in the making Springs Fest, which was held weekend before last. We estimate that we were over 3,000 people. That comes from a lot of different calculations and a lot of help from the town. It was very successful. We didn't have any safety issues, and we are looking forward to doing it again the same time next year. So look for more information, but just wanted to express our huge thank you for the entire town. I thank everybody down to the, I'm not going to name a staff member, but I know for a fact that staff member helped that week. And if anybody says anything about the spray paint on the streets, come talk to me. We'll figure out how to get that off, too. But thank you again, and to Randy and your entire staff. They were invaluable for helping us. So thank you.
It was a great day.
That was a great event. Well organized. Well done.
And started early. Never mind. Seven o'clock.
I was here at 5:30.
Were you really? I'm impressed. I'm both impressed. All right. At this point in time, we'll close the public comment period and go to Agenda Item 6A, recognition of 12 U Girls All-Star Basketball Team, and Chris Champion's going to lead us off from our Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Chris Champion. I'm here from the Parks and Recreation Department, and we would like to recognize the 12 U Girls All-Star Basketball Team, so if you guys can make your way up. This team competed in and won the 12 U SWAC State Championship this year. So let's give them a big round of applause.
The SWAC organization is made up of Parks and Recreation Departments from across the state that come together to put on tournaments at the recreational level for youth and all sports. So I will turn it over to Coach Tim Brevelin for individual recognition.
Thank you, Chris, and we'd like to appreciate, mention, appreciate your great work, having us organized all through the regular season as well as the All-Stars. It happens fast. These are girls who are on six different teams during the year, and so to have them come together and play so well as a team and win the state championship, very proud of them. One quick story, we have a couple of girls who practice in a minute or two after this, so I will not talk long, but I think one of my favorite stories to sum up kind of our few weeks together winning the state championship was at one of our tournaments, a boy about seven or eight years old came up who was not, had any association with our team, but was with another team, and came up and said, "I love to watch your team play. They are playing so well together. They're great players, and they're fun to watch." And so I thought that was, that was really telling. It was just a fun team to coach. So congratulations again. So we have Skye Zenny. Come on over. Madison Lamptey. Dakota Hancock. Charlotte Breslin. Kate Dilly. Ava Skladonowski. And Ava Stabus. And just for the record, Mr. Mayor, we did have two who could not join us today, so I did want to say their names, Katie Leonard and Kendall Wallace, both important members. Not only is Coach Tim a great coach, but he's also a good basketball player. He plays on my team. He's good. Forty and over. Forty and over.
Oh, really?
He's a good boy.
I'm in. I'm in. Again, congratulations. And Agenda Item 6B, Kids Appreciation Day 2019. We have, I think, Jimmy and Chandler Cobb. I saw you, Jimmy. Where are you hiding? There you are. And also, I think your president's here today? There you go. No Chandler?
Mike's here.
Mike's here.
Mike's here. Mike Stone.
But you told me, you told me you were just going to stand here and support.
Oh, wingman. Okay.
All right. Okay. Jimmy Cobb, 4936 Sunset Forest Circle here in Holly Springs. To the members of the Holly Springs Town Council, mayor, staff, guests, welcome all y'all this evening. The Quantas Club of Holly Springs is dedicated to serving the needs of the children in our local community and beyond. Our members are made up of local business owners, community leaders, public servants, and citizens who put service first and are passionate about giving back to our community. Kids Appreciation Day is one of the most anticipated annual family-focused, fun-filled events for Holly Springs kids, their families, and our schools. It enables our families and our business community to join with our schools to celebrate the end of the school year. And yes, school's just about over for another year, and summer will be here soon. Would the following people please come forward? And I'll apologize in advance if I mess up on the names, but it happens. Representing Holly Ridge Middle School, Yellow Jackets, Amanda Williams. Danica Hartwick. Lucas Anderson. And Mr. George Priest. Representing Holly Springs Elementary School, Cheetahs, George Polichek. Raina Sud. DeMarcus Dixon Woodard. And Amy Sensabaugh. For the Oakview Elementary Owls, Rashine Shalhoub. And Caroline Eftaar. And finally, for the Holly Ridge Elementary Labradors, the representative is Sophia Thompson. If y'all hang tight for just a second, we're almost finished. The Terrific Kids and Terrific Teacher Program is a recognition program that promotes character development, self-esteem, and perseverance. Terrific is an acronym for Thoughtful, Enthusiastic, Respectful, Responsible, Inclusive, Friendly, Inquisitive, and Capable. Every word is a mouthful. Each school nominates a maximum of three students and one teacher from their staff and enrollment, and their enrollment to win the Terrific Kids and Terrific Teacher Award. These award winners embrace the character traits that the Terrific acronym stands for. These people standing here before you are great souls, and they represent the moral values that we, as a community, hold to be priceless. Not only will these students and teachers be recognized tonight as terrific kids and terrific teachers, they will also be awarded additional accolades and prizes during the award ceremony that will be held at the annual Kids Appreciation Day. A special dinner celebration is being upheld in their honor at the Chick-fil-A of Holly Springs after the Kids Appreciation event. This year's event will be held at Suggs Farm on May 18th, 2019, which is a week and a half from now, from 11 to 3:00. So I'd like for you all to please take a moment to show your support for these people who made such a huge difference in the lives of others. And I'd also like you to extend a heartfelt thank to the parents that... Yes? Caroline? Come on up, Caroline. She is... From Holly Ridge. Come on up. It was not on my list, or I apologize. But thank you for the parents who've done such a great job of raising such future leaders and representatives of our community. I always love to follow him because he read my speech. So I don't have to. I don't have to. Let's do a picture, okay, with the kids and Jimmy and Mike. Chandler, you want to come up? Chandler, would you mind coming up? Add some beauty to this whole people here. Two lines. Two lines. Beauty and the Beast. You guys ready? Smile. All right, everybody, smile. Well, thank you, guys. Remember, I was gonna say to you, your tent will be held at South Park Park on May 18th, November 11th, November 11th. I will be there some weekend. You'll be in the same as November 3rd. Thank you again for coming. Congratulations, kids. Kid is anybody under 65, by the way. So if I say kids, don't be disappointed. I love it. You love it?
Yeah.
All right. Agenda Item 6C is Apraxia Awareness Day. I had no idea what this was, but we're going to hear more. Come on down. Childhood apraxia of speech causes children to have significant difficulty learning to speak and is among the most severe speech deficits, deficits, yeah, in children. And I think Charmaine James, is it? I think you might want to add a few words. Am I correct? Good. You're on.
Hi, I'm Charmaine James from Arbor Creek, 212 Capella Court, and this is a little about childhood apraxia. I brought my daughter, Aleah, with me, who suffers from childhood apraxia. So our story began like many others. After a eventful pregnancy, I gave birth to a healthy nine-pound, 15-ounce baby girl on January 29th, 2016. Aleah progressed as all charts said she should. She met all milestones. Gained weight, height, top of the charts. She did well. At around 10 months, she began to say Naya. She said it very clearly. It was, we kind of expected it since our dog name is Naya, so we thought she was hitting milestones. We were always complimented on how quiet of a baby she is. Even today, you can see she's very quiet. She doesn't speak much. In hindsight, we realized she never did the babbling or the cooing. Over the next few months, Aleah only gained one word, dada. So after speaking with her teachers at SAS, we realized that maybe she should undergo a speech screening. In January 2018, we received her results. She said, "I think your daughter has something we call apraxia. She needs a full evaluation immediately." I'm not sure that I heard anything after that, because I was Googling what apraxia was. Will she be okay? What does it mean for us, our future, our family? As I read through the apraxia checklist, I realized that she hit every mark. Our, our next indicators was a gap between expressive and receptive communication. I'll never forget the tears and hopelessness of that day. We discovered that childhood apraxia of speech is found in one out of every thousand kids. They understand everything that's going around them, but there's a neurological motor planning disorder that prevents them from speaking. There's a wide range of severity, from being completely nonverbal to having fluency issues to a combination of characteristics that requires intense, frequent one-on-one speech therapy. There's no matrix to follow. There's no cure. There's no real light at the end of the tunnel. Then we dealt with our second biggest blow. Most insurance companies deem this condition of developmental delay, meaning since she never had the skill to speak, she could never do rehab to regain it. She will probably not go, grow out of it, or we have to go through the school system for assistance. Called in every governmental agency that I could. I was told that she was too young, she was too old, you make too much, you already have insurance, we can't accept you. And my favorites around here in Wake County is, we have a 10-year waitlist. We have closed our waitlist because we have no idea when we will reach the end. The past year has been the hardest, loneliest, most frightened year of my life. I can't help but wonder, does she have friends? How was your day? Does she, does people pick on her? What is school like? We have some good and not-so-good and some truly unbearable days, but after going through all the emotions, we determined to raise awareness and make a difference so that other families will not feel lost. This is why... This is why this is so important. This is why I'm here. These children suffer in silence, and we need your help to help find their voice. So thank you all for this day.
Let's give her a hand for... I want to give you a proclamation also, but what I want to say is, people like me have never heard of this, and this is an awareness day. So we proclaim May 14th, 2019, as Apraxia Awareness Day, and you've brought us some new knowledge. And thank you very much. We support, okay? This is for you and for her. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I just have one more, and this is a Kids to Park Day, May 18th, 2019. This is something that came on the Internet, and we got asked to be a participant. So we are Kids Park Day, May 18th, 2019. And the thing here is, Kids to Park Day instills the appreciation and importance of public lands and the great outdoors. So we will make sure that the people, wherever they are... All right, Lotisha? We'll get this with them. So that was that. Thank you. Now, Agenda I of 7A, Public Hearing. And this is the longest starting point I've ever seen. Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18-CPA-02, Zoning Map Amendment 18-REZ-01, Planned Unit Development Master Plan 18-PUD-01, 3708, and O'Woods Creek Road, Carolina Springs, and the Infrastructure Reimbursement Agreement. Sean Ryan.
All right. Good evening, Council. Before you tonight is a package of projects together known as Carolina Springs. So tonight, we'll review the requested applications. It consists of a comprehensive plan amendment, a rezoning application, a PUD master plan, and then followed by a proposed infrastructure reimbursement agreement. So the action that the Council will take this evening, after the staff presentation, we will conduct the legislative public hearing, and then there will be three motions before you for the project. But to take a step back first, just to kind of review the process and where we've been, this project was last before the Town Council on April 2nd for a joint public hearing with the Planning Board. And that was the initial public hearing for this project and allowed the Planning Board and the Town Council to hear from the project applicant as well as ask questions of the applicant and allowed them to prepare some additional materials, which were then presented to the Planning Board for review on April 22nd. The Planning Board has made their recommendation, and our Planning Board representative is here this evening to go over that recommendation with the Town Council. And then we're here tonight, May 7th, to review all of this information and make a determination on this package of projects. Just to recall the location of the project, it's a little less than 400 acres, located in the northernmost part of the town's jurisdiction. So we have the town of Apex north of US-1, which is this line running across the screen here. And this is the interchange of NC-540 and Old Holly Springs Apex Road or Veridia Parkway. So just right off of that interchange along Woods Creek Road and Woodfield Dutton Drive runs through the middle of the property. So Planning and Development, it's important to remember that this is a zoning ordinance specific to this project. So typically, development projects follow our Unified Development Ordinance. A Planned Unit Development allows a property owner to write their own zoning requirements outside of our typical development standards contained in the Unified Development Ordinance. And we do that to encourage and allow for creativity and innovation in the design of projects. So this document will establish the permitted uses as well as the development standards for all future development of the property. So the first component of this project is a comprehensive plan amendment on the screen. You can see the town's current future land use plan. The property area is highlighted in red here. And as you can see, the current future land use designation for this property is Business Park. The Business Park was intended for clean industry uses and was placed in strategic areas located adjacent to major transportation routes. On the left-hand side of the screen, you can see the existing land use plan. On the right-hand side of the screen, you can see the applicant's proposal to change that designation to a mixed-use designation. The mixed-use designation in our future land use plan encourages the mixing of a wide variety of commercial and higher-density residential uses. So the next component of the plan is a request to rezonate to a Planned Unit Development District and establish the Planned Unit Development Master Plan. The current zoning of the property is R-30 residential, R-20 residential, and LB local business. You can see the R-30 adjacent to Old Holly Springs Apex Road, the local business adjacent to US-1. Both the R-30 and the R-20 residential are lower-density residential, single-family residential zoning districts, and the LB district is a commercial and mixed-use zoning district. Again, on the left-hand side of the screen, you can see the existing zoning map. On the right-hand side of the screen, you can see the proposal to rezone that to Planned Unit Development. So one of the things that is in our Unified Development Ordinance is a statement that Planning and Developments should only be used when a project is unique or cannot be done using the standards of the Unified Development Ordinance. So I did want to briefly touch on the two things that are in the town's current ordinance that allows for mixed-use development, such as the Planning and Development that is being proposed before you tonight. We have a mixed-use option, which is allowed in all of our commercial zoning districts. It allows for this mix of higher-density residential and non-residential land uses. However, there is a stipulation that at least 20% of the land area has to be non-residential. In the case of this project, they do not meet that threshold with gross land area, so they would not be able to utilize the mixed-use option. The other opportunity in our ordinance is called Development Options. We allow this in all of our residential zoning districts. Again, we allow for a mix of those residential land uses as well as allowing up to 5% of the land area as non-residential or commercial land uses. This project would not meet those standards as proposed. The commercial portion of the project exceeds that 5%, and the lot sizes that are being proposed are smaller than the lot sizes that would be allowed under Development Options. So the applicant has proposed to move forward with a Planned Unit Development for this project. So the total land area, like I said previously, is just under 400 acres, and the gross density proposed is 4.5 units per acre. It's approximately 1,700 units and 340,000 square feet of non-residential land uses. This is the proposed master plan in the lower corner of the screen. It's divided into four different districts: a Town Center, Innovation, Village Square, and Neighborhood District. Just going through all of those individual districts, starting with the Town Center, this is primarily the commercial district of the Planned Unit Development, a minimum of 120,000 square feet of non-residential floor area. On the left-hand side of the screen, I've provided you kind of a side-by-side comparison of what the Planned Unit Development is proposing versus what a comparable district in our Unified Development Ordinance would allow, just to provide the Council an opportunity to see what differences this Planning and Development is proposing when comparing it to our Unified Development Ordinance. You can see there's some changes in density, different setbacks to create a more mixed-use and urban feel. Moving west across the property is the Innovation District. This is a minimum of 200,000 square feet of non-residential land uses, as well as residential, up to eight units per acre. This is most comparable to our Office and Research District or our Research and Technology District, so our Office Park or Light Industrial zoning districts. And again, the side-by-side comparison as to what deviations the applicant is making from our Unified Development Ordinance. So allowing for residential land uses as well as some increases in building height. Moving west, we have the Village Square District. This is primarily the large portion of the mixed-use component of this project, so it would allow for a mixture of non-residential as well as apartments and townhomes into this area, a minimum of 20,000 square feet of non-residential land uses and 15 units per acre. And finally, the westernmost portion of the project is the Neighborhood District. This is primarily a single-family residential and townhome portion of the project. There is no minimum commitment for non-residential, and 4.5 units per acre is the maximum density. Other standards that are contained within this Planned Unit Development include parking requirements, which will generally follow the current requirements in our ordinance with a 25% reduction allowed. Loading and landscaping will follow the Unified Development Ordinance with some minor deviations to the landscaping allowances. Tree preservation requirements. The applicant is proposing 15% of the project area to be the preservation area with priority to stream buffers, floodplains, wetlands, bottomland hardwoods, and perimeter yards, and then also instituting a goal of 20% tree canopy once the project is complete. As far as open space, the Planning and Development requires at least 10% as some form of developed open space, so it can't be just passive or undisturbed areas. It has to be developed into pocket parks, amenity areas, trails, and all those are proposed with this project. In addition to that, 39.2 acres, the applicant is proposing a 25-acre town park dedication. And this is the proposed open space plan. You can see the dotted lines are the greenway trails running throughout the project, and then the symbols represent locations of community parks or plaza areas that are distributed throughout the project. This is the proposed phasing plan that was included in the Planning and Development, and this was a topic that did come up at Planning Board, so I just wanted to touch on it briefly. This is a proposed phasing plan that is subject to change. However, one of the recommendations that came from the Planning Board was incorporating some of the written non-residential phasing agreements in the Infrastructure Reimbursement Agreement into the Planned Unit Development. After Planning Board, the applicant did revise the plans to include those requirements. However, those requirements have been updated, so we're just going to recommend as a condition of approval that those also get updated in the Planned Unit Development. With that, I will turn it over to Rachel Jones to discuss some of the utility requirements for this project.
Hi, Rachel.
Good evening. All right. So with this Planned Unit Development and per our UDO and Engineering Design Construction Standards, they are required to provide public utilities to the project site. Water service will be achieved through connection into an existing water main as well as extension of water main across the property frontage. There was also a hydraulic water analysis completed with the Planned Unit Development Master Plan to confirm adequate pressure and capacity in the area. Sewer service will also be provided to the project site through connection with or to existing gravity sewer as well as extension of gravity sewer network throughout the project site, construction of two new pump stations in addition to forced main network. And with the Planned Unit Development Project and rezoning, a downstream sewer study and pump station report has been completed and approved. The area that the Planned Unit Development is proposed to be in is in our reuseervice area, so they will be connecting to our reclaimed water system and providing reclaimed water extension as well. So this is the onsite utility plan that is in the packet before you this evening. And you can see here, there is the water main extension along the frontage of the property on Woods Creek Road as well as Woodfield Dutton, as well as throughout the internal street network. We have water and reclaimed water main, and the applicant has shown stubs to adjacent properties as well for future development. The green lines show the onsite gravity sewer network throughout the site, and there are gravity sewer stubs to adjacent properties that are upstream in the sewer basin. The blue font here show the location of the two proposed pump stations that both will be forced-mained to the water reclamation facility. So this slide shows the two alternate routes that are also in the master plan drawings that are before you this evening. So there's an alternate forced-mound Route A, shown here, that is routed down Holly Springs New Hall Road, Green Oaks Parkway, and ultimately down Irving Parkway to the water reclamation facility. Alternate B utilizes existing easement and then will be routed down that same path to the water reclamation facility. And it should be noted that this forced-main network will be finalized with the first development plan or master plan that comes before you. So moving on to transportation, a traffic impact analysis was completed with the Planned Unit Development Project. They analyzed 10 intersections, and the recommended improvements that were included from that analysis will be incorporated as the project develops. So with each development plan or detailed master plan that comes in, there'll be a technical memorandum to verify that each plan is within the limits that were approved with the TIA that's associated with the PUD before you this evening. There's also an additional technical memorandum that's part of your packet this evening, where the applicant provided some phasing information of what is expected to occur as the development plans or detailed master plans come in. And that's based on the trip generation that's expected with each phase that's part of that phasing plan in the master plan packet. So what we show here that is part of the master plan associated with a PUD is the onsite roadway network. So you can see the thoroughfare widening along Woods Creek Road. It will ultimately be a four-lane median-divided cross-section. The applicant is widening their half of that thoroughfare. The red dashed lines and arrows show the internal street network as well as the anticipated driveway locations and also connections to adjacent properties for future development to provide the interconnectivity that is part of our standard requirements. And the offsite road improvements, this is the summary from the traffic impact analysis showing the various intersections that have been studied. There will be signal timing modifications, additional turn lanes, as well as the thoroughfare widening that we showed on the previous slide. And it should be noted that there will also be a fee and lieu required proportionate to the project's impact for a right turn lane, a third right turn lane from Bennett Knoll Parkway onto the bypass.
And with that, I will invite our Planning Board Representative, Rick Madoni, up to give the Town Council the Planning Board discussion.
Good evening. Are there any specific questions or you just want to know what we talked about at the Planning Board?
Just cover what you talked about primarily for us, please.
What you can see in your packet, there were many items discussed at the last Planning Board meeting. Besides what is listed here, I'll summarize and elaborate on some of the additional details. For the Planned Unit Development versus Unified Development Ordinance, the largest discussion with the Board, the Planning Department, and the developer was the Planned Unit Development. We questioned why this had to be a PUD and why they couldn't use the existing Unified Development Ordinance. I'll let them elaborate on the reasoning. With the Planning Department, we also discussed other PUDs in the area and how the UDO had been tailored to minimize the use of PUDs in Holly Springs. As we discussed during the joint training last week on TIA's, traffic is always a hot topic of a discussion. While this development has good access to 540, most of the homeowners will still have to rely on heading back towards NC-55 to get to the existing commercial developments in Holly Springs. Where there's not going to be a connection to US-1 with this development, the nearby Friendship-US-1 interchange is in the works for the future. For water and sewage, while traffic usually gets the most discussion as far as infrastructure, there was concern that this large development in conjunction with other approved developments and the amount of adequate water and sewage. For the public park, while we as a town are excited to have some of the land dedicated to a public park, there was concern over how the town would fund improvements to the park to make it usable to the public. For the timing of the non-residential versus residential development, one important aspect of this project was a plan for 70% residential and 30% commercial, which has been something most of us have been pushing for. Related to this is that we're interested in seeing a priority building or priority phasing of the commercial development for multiple reasons. First, it would aid in economic development of the town. And second, it would ensure it wouldn't just be another residential neighborhood, and the commercial would come later. This led to the additional motion that we added, and you can see that in your packet. There was also a short discussion of the future nearby Wake County Public School. This would aid in one of the other necessities that we're always in constant need of in and around Holly Springs. As far as the Iceplex, while the Coward Sports Complex is an exciting opportunity, it's also understood that it's not guaranteed to be built. And the rest of everything else, as you've seen in your packet. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, Rick, at this point?
No.
Do not. Thank you. That was 8:01, correct? Thank you, Rick.
Yes.
Yes, we request that you open the public hearing and then allow the applicant to make their presentation.
Okay. Did anyone sign up that I didn't get this information? I have no one signed up for this. Is that correct? So open and close public hearing.
So you're going to open the public hearing, the applicant's going to give his presentation if there's any, if after the presentation, there's any requirement for...
Yeah, okay, let's do it that way. So applicants, please.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is David Stallings. I am the owner of Shenandoah Homes and Capital Properties, the applicant for this PUD zoning. I'd like for all of you to imagine a place wherein one day, without using a car, you can pick up your kids from school, take your kids to play hockey or another afternoon activity, have afternoon exercise walking a local greenway trail with a neighbor, check your relatives into a hotel for their visit, go to the grocery store, get your hair cut, pick up your dry cleaning, see a movie or musical performance, have dinner with friends and family, and have a beer or glass of wine with coworkers, and then walk home. One of the things that I think is important about this is that this is a destination. It's a place you come. It's a place you stay. It's a place you don't have to leave. There's going to be opportunities to work here, there's going to be opportunities to have fun here, there's opportunities to stay here. So it should minimize traffic and become a real sense of place. And with that, we're going to go into what we're going to cover. A lot of this, with the thanks of Town Council, has covered a good portion of this stuff, but the PUD, a sense of place, the strategic location of the community, the fact that it is a largely retail, commercial, and mixed-use community, its density and affordability with shared open space making an opportunity for the community, the connectivity greenway trails, the Coward Sports Academy and Development Center, and then we're going to talk a little bit about the TIA, the future business park, its economic impact, and then the summary. I'm going to turn it over to Brian Richards to discuss the PUD and a couple other things.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Brian Richards with the Dravenale. So why PUD, that was discussed at the last meeting. You know, kind of the big picture items on that are what a PUD enables us to do is provide a variety of housing, provide a range of housing for all types of living situations people want, everything from young families, young professionals, to people that are aging out of their house, looking to move into age-targeted types of properties as well. And this, if property is intended to have a wide range of life for that, as well as a wide range of sizes of that lots and homes and apartments to allow for varying income opportunities as well for housing. This, part of this also enables us to create more compact development. The biggest thing that does is, one, it promotes walkability, creating a place you actually can walk around, and it also enables us to preserve a lot more open space and save more trees. And it really comes down to provide more amenities, whether it's the 40 acres of developed open space we talked about, that Sean talked about, or the open space of tree preservation trails and things of that nature as well. It also enables us to have a differing mix of uses so that you can not leave the property, so you can live, work, and play. And that really is what this is going to provide for the community. Just to kind of touch on the, I think the end summarization from the Planning Board meeting on the PUD was, this project came in with not doing a PUD. And we went through TRC and through various conversations, eventually got to the point where everyone realized, you guys need to do a PUD. And that's basically what it came back to. So it was kind of a joint effort of finally coming to the realization, this project needs to be a PUD to make it happen. And that's kind of how we got to where we did. Let me make sure I do this. And one of the things that kind of enables us to do by preserving all that open space, by making it walkable, is enables us to create a sense of place. It's kind of the opportunity that gives us a chance to be a little more creative with certain aspects. This project will come back in with an architectural master plan so that we can have a sense of character, something that's not just like every other project you see. A place is going to have memorable spaces where you're going to create memories as a family or as a kid, and you come back and say, I remember going to that splash pad in the Town Village Square at Carolina Springs, where I grew up. A place where you can gather with friends, gather with your community, and have events, have farmers' markets, have music events, all those types of things, and the added bonus of the possibility of the iceplex will just really enhance that opportunity. And a place you can walk and go have a coffee with friends or have a meal. And that's kind of what we get to with that. I think David's going to touch on one more piece.
So one of the big issues associated with almost any development in Holly Springs and quite honestly, any municipality around Raleigh has been traffic. That is why this location makes this opportunity so perfect. The infrastructure associated with 540, Highway 1, Highway 55 interchange, the Veridia Parkway interchange, all of those things can keep traffic off of the municipal roads associated with Holly Springs. And so this is an opportunity for Holly Springs to quite honestly, take advantage of the economic impact of this development without having to deal with the disadvantage of laboring its municipal streets. The master land use plan you guys have already spoken about with staff, and I don't want to belabor too much, but I do want to point out, down here, the Wake County Public School site that's currently under contract with Duke as well. So not only do you have this, but Betty Parker at Wake County Public Schools has been working with Duke to provide this 71-acre future site, which will be in combination with that, and then the town park across the street, and our community amenities that I think quite honestly, will make an unprecedented community in Holly Springs. This one is just real quickly, talks about the variety of uses with a focus on retail, commercial, and mixed-use. What I want to point out here is that this makes it the ability to be a destination, okay? You're not sending a car here to then turn around and have that car put back on the streets to take the kid or their children to five other activities during the day. This is an opportunity to take, pick them up from school, take them to the town park, spend time with them in the afternoons, take them to sporting events, meet for dinner with the rest of the family when other family members are done for work, and then eventually go home, either whether it be here or within the Twelve Oaks or other neighboring communities. I'm turning it back over to Mr. Richards with the open space plan.
I'll go over this real quick. I think a lot of this has been touched on, but I think one of the key points to point out here is, I mean, over a quarter of this property is going to be open space. I mean, that's a pretty significant amount, 40 acres of that being developed open space, improved open space, whether it's trails, parks, amenities, plazas, you know, all those kinds of things for people to enjoy, amenities for the community. In addition to that, the added bonus of the Wake County Public School that will be across the street from this, the 25 acres in addition to that, which will be dedicated for land for a town park, all connected, and that's probably the biggest thing here, this is all connected by trails, by trails, by sidewalks, by walkability, by this nice compact development that enables you to do that and make it really viable. With these trails, you can see the network of trails that runs up and down, runs by the town park, I should say, across the edge of the town park, and connects all these various things. And there will be additional items of trails or walkways that connect to the people within this community to these trails as part of this. And kind of when you look at that connectivity, you get the sense that we're also bringing people to this community on trails. So part of this is, in addition to the two and a half acres onsite of greenway trails, which is about a mile or so above what is on the town's comprehensive plan within this property, we're also looking at over a mile of trail to connect down to Twelve Oaks. So bringing these people to this property as well. So just kind of getting that sense that this is a property, a project, a community that's going to connect people to nature, connect people to their neighbors, connect people to amenities, to activities, and connect people to the town of Holly Springs and the community of Carolina Springs. And one of the questions that came up at the original public hearing, the joint public hearing, was some additional kind of graphics of what might this look like? And then keeping in mind that this is a conceptual plan, but we'll kind of, I'll try to walk you through it as best I can. Looking at this, what you're doing is, as you saw before, the coming down off Old Holly Springs Apex Road, coming into what we call the town center, that would be your commercial area, which would look to have, that'll be this here in red, that would be your grocery store and kind of inline commercial that could service not just the town, the community of Carolina Springs, but also surrounding communities in the area. Coming in through the site, you get to what we call our village square area, our mixed-use walkable core, which encompasses both the Innovation District to the north of the road and the Village Square District to the south of the road and just across the larger creek. So as you come in, you'll see we're looking at mixed-use amenities with, on the Innovation District, it could be something like office with ground floor retail and commercial, or hotel, which is something that's been very much talked about with the iceplex. This indicates the iceplex in here as well, all surrounded a town green, a town square, I should say. And then on the south side, that would be a similar type of development, but with multifamily apartments above a ground floor commercial. And then as you kind of move away from that heart of that village square plaza, you move in, you have a larger park that is more of an open space park for amenities. And just to give you a sense of scale, just this little area right here fits a football field. So this is not a small, small open space and park. You come down in here, you start, as you start to get away, kind of one of the concepts you do is you get that density as close to that amenity as you can, and then gradually fade away, because that's basically making that many more people close and easy, easy access to that amenity, and then it starts to fade away. So we go from apartments to townhomes to single families and kind of gradually blend away from that. As you cross the creek, this would be idea of having some additional apartments. This might be, this again, this is one concept, this might be an age-targeted apartment building that provides that access with apartments, and then you have that space for that extra-large amenity to service the townhomes and the single families. One of the thought processes of putting that age-targeted unit here is usually they have extra amenities provided for them onsite, so that enables them to do that with that site. And as you go through, you'll see all this is connected by trails, greenway trails, we have our town park, and that kind of gives you a sense. So I'll go through and give you a sense of, I'm going to go back if I can, if they'll let me. So driving through here, as I'm describing this, we're kind of standing here now as we drive through the mixed-use core. This would be the idea of having ground floor retail, apartments, ground floor retail, maybe office or hotel, that type of amenity. You can see where you're looking at, you're looking right towards the corner of the iceplex and the village square. This would be the concept for the village square, the types of amenities that might exist in that village square, looking at the iceplex, the multifamily with ground floor commercial. This is looking kind of south and west, back towards the townhomes and the larger park space down here. This could be something like a hotel in this space, having things like interactive fountains, water features, things like that, that really present opportunities for activation of this space. And then going through downward down at the larger park space, looking back to get a sense of how, one of the things that personally I think is just a great opportunity with this is, you're really integrating this iceplex into this walkable environment versus having this standalone piece that everybody has to drive to. I mean, that's one of the big pieces that's a real advantage to this, is so many people can walk to this now. And so just touching on that. So I will go to here and give it back to David.
So one of the things we've talked about is the Coward Sports Academy. It is going to provide ice hockey, synchronized skating, figure skating, speed skating, also have public skating sessions, private and group instruction, adult hockey leagues. The general, I'm going to go through this relatively quickly, but the general feel of this is that, number one, ice in our location and within other locations, honestly nationwide, is at, is a minimum. There needs to be much more ice in order to provide for the sport that people want. The special thing about the Coward Ice Complex is it's not just ice, okay? They're going to provide sporting events for nationwide events, but also they're going to provide an actual, an actual school and academy. These are all views of what the Coward Ice Complex is going to be. You guys have had a chance to see these before. They're going to have opportunities that after practices, they're going to be able to video those practices, then immediately go and look and see and work on the skills in which they're trying to perfect. This is a view of the academy itself, along with some of the amenities associated with it. I'm going to turn this over to Remy Kemp, who did the traffic impact analysis.
Good evening. Ryanald Stevenson with Remy Kemp and Associates, 5808 Farrington Place in Raleigh. You've already heard a lot about the traffic impacts, and David hit on this, but again, I'll just reiterate again, this is just ideally located next to 540, US-1, and the access to 55 is, in this area, is very convenient. You're not driving through a lot of the congested areas to get to 55 in this area. So got access to three major facilities right at the project. So we did the TIA as typically done. We worked with the town staff and DOT, prepared everything according to their guidelines and standards, and we've all agreed on the improvements that are going to be done, and Rachel hit on those. We're improving 10 intersections, which is most of the intersections that we studied in the TIA. We're doing some type of improvement there. Significant amount of widening. The frontage widening along Woods Creek Road's almost two miles, it's getting close to two miles, and we'll be widening that road. And you can see some other traffic signals and turn lanes and those kinds of things that we'd be adding at some point. And Rachel hit on the improvements, and I know there may be other questions, and I'm going through this relatively quickly, but it's all been done, reviewed, and agreed to, and you can see a lot of red on that diagram. That's all the improvements that we'd be doing. So I'm sure there'll be questions later, but that's the overview of the traffic study.
And then finally, I just want to leave you with a couple comments. Because of the PUD and what we're creating with its mixed use, we're able to provide the utility connections, the transportation access, and the live-work-play community that can open up a future business park, which is what I think the town truly wants in the areas associated around this area. The Innovation District will not be the only business park and business purely commercial area associated here. There are other adjacent pieces of property that we will stub into that will now have the sewer and utility capacities to provide that business park. I would like to point out, we have, we're actually working with a hotel developer on another piece of property in Knightdale that has committed to our site there, and we have meetings with them about this site now. We also, Arina has been making connections with us and other developers with hotel and commercial uses. We have a meeting in about a week and a half or two weeks, and I don't have the exact date in my mind, but a group coming from Miami that has a local sponsor in Chapel Hill about the hotel sites. And Arina and I are going to work hand in hand to make sure that not only are we getting hotels, but we get the right kind of hotels. We want a full-service hotel to come here to start, and then we potentially see the site to have at least two hotels, a full service and potentially maybe an express hotel later. But all these things are in the works and our plans, and this is the first step of many that we're all going to be able to take to create what we think is a very special community, and I think it can make a very special community for Holly Springs, and quite honestly, could be a showcase for any municipality in the state. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Questions of the applicants from the board? I'm sure we do.
Thank you for presenting. Councils spent quite a bit of time reviewing this packet, this specific project. David, can you walk us through what the vision would be from a phase standpoint of how you would build a project if this was approved?
Yes, sir.
From beginning to end?
Yes. So we have had conversations with that with staff a bunch, and first of all, I would like to say, the staff has been absolutely amazing. This has not been an easy process. This has been a labor, one of the hardest labors I've ever done with a development. It's the largest one, but it's also, the staff has been absolutely amazing in trying to make this work and see, and make it work so that they can represent the town faithfully and in a fiduciary manner, so that they're representing the town in a good way. But what we've talked about, and I'm going to let Brian also chime in here if I miss something, but what we've talked about is getting the sewer improvements approved first and working right away, okay? So doing that, and then the second phase would be putting in the major spine roads to the community. So you would immediately have the main road off of Woods Creek Road, and you would immediately have the main road off of Woods Creek Dead End Road. Those two would come in to this, to this roundabout here in the middle. Do you guys view my mouse? Okay. So it would come into this roundabout in the middle. The phasing would actually come from both sides. You know, while we would want to start residential up Woods Creek Dead End Road, down here off of Woods Creek Road, immediately it would open up this area for the iceplex, which in our conversations, and actually, we're meeting directly after this meeting, assuming this vote goes positively, we're meeting directly after this to go through timing, and their timing is yesterday. So that also influences the creation of the spine roads. We need to be able to create the spine road, have the sewer in place, so that they can We need to be able to create the spine road, have the sewer in place, so that they can start. And then we can also start the residential developments as well. I believe while we are, we are doing the work that would require the site plans for both the Iceplex, the spine roads, and the first phase of residential development, that's when my team would go to work on their additional commercial. We're in conversations with multiple, in addition to Shenandoah Homes, which this community is of a size that you need true horsepower. You need, you need people that have amazing resources. So we're here in conversations with a dozen regional and national players that every one of them would love to be here. And we're going to review them based on product, affordability, price point, all of those things. But, but they're going to come in along with us. And with those two things coming together, I think we can, my team will start to focus on not only the town homes and residential that we're going to do personally with Shenandoah, but also on the commercial aspects. So I think grocery stores would be our first, our first run. We would be selecting a brokerage firm to help us with the commercial, because they're the experts. There's a couple of national, national conventions that happen each year. And we would attend those and present those to most of the, the commercial guys, the commercial and retail users out there, so that we can bring in the square footage that you guys have required of us. Does that help?
It, it's, it's a high overview of what you're visiting here, but I was wondering if you can give us specifically percentage wise, you know, from the residential to the ice hockey ring, the commercial aspect.
Yeah, so.
What, give me an idea of what that potential would look like.
Okay, so we've, I, I can talk about it in number of units of houses and square feet of commercial. Is that helpful?
Sure.
Okay, so the Iceplex coming in right away would be 253,000 square feet of commercial use in the Innovation District. With the Iceplex, I can tell you that right behind it, I will have a hotel user. And that hotel could be as much as 150,000 square feet. The residential uses, I think in our first phase would probably be somewhere around 300 to 400 unit, 300 units would be my guess. Now, all these things take time, right? And so we're kind of walking one with the other. It's like taking a step and a step and a step. So there has to be, and what we've worked with this, with the staff on, is creating the percentages of residential and commercial that have to go hand in hand. So the part that we've worked on is, all right, 60,000 square feet has to be, you know, planned before 50, or I can't remember the percentages, but they're in your packet, right? So in, in those stages, we have to have it planned, then we have to have it implemented and permitted. And then we can move on to the next level and vice versa. If we, in our conversations, I will tell you that in a perfect world, I don't think that there will ever be a problem reaching the commercial issues that, that are commercial percentages that we have in there. But in the real world, I know that life throws me curveballs all the time. They throw them to you, they throw them to me, they throw them to all of us. What I can impress upon you is my intent and my desire and my sense of urgency associated with not just this development, but in the creation of something that's unique. And it will not, that sense of urgency and, and the, the energy and effort level that we'll put into it won't change. So I know that's a little bit subjective, and that's a lot of, you know, overhead view, but the packet that you have shows percentages that guarantee commercial before you get, before I can get permitted with a certain amount of residential. I think that's completely achievable. And that's why we've agreed to it. But I will, I will tell you that it scares me if we tried to push it any further. And that's, that's kind of why we ended up where we did, because life, life can throw all, all of us a curveball. We don't know what the economy is going to do. Right now, we have a wonderful economy, and I think it will continue. But, but yeah, that's the deal.
Other questions?
Well, no, I, thank you for asking that, Tom. I think, you know, one of my concerns has been, you know, for many of us is that we'll have all this residential, the commercial will be lacking. And like you say, there's so many curveballs that could happen. My big thing with that is I, I know a lot of people don't mind just looking at a, a field with, you know, an empty field, but with this high density, having amenities there like grocery stores, things like that, will keep people in their neighborhood and not coming onto, onto the other roads where the traffic will be. So that's one of the things we're kind of worried about. We want, you know, like say, we want it to be a community for them. And not that we don't want them coming to Holly Springs, of course, in, into downtown and things, but if they have to do that every day for everything, all that traffic, then the road improvements wouldn't even, that you're doing, wouldn't even touch it. So that's my concern.
Yeah, and I understand that, and let me address it this way. The, the traffic that we create does not require a four lane median divided road on Woods Creek Road. It doesn't. And, and, and so we're actually over, over providing, I think, what will eventually, eventually be needed, but not today. And the other thing I will say is that there will be, because of this, there will be adjacent developments. And those adjacent developments will come with additional improved traffic analysis and infrastructure improvements, just like we do. And those things always, it's just the way it happens and it comes in and in. Now, what I will tell you is that the reason that we focused all of the density and the commercial upfront is for people that do want to come in, get their groceries and be able to leave, they're not having to drive down Main Street, okay? They don't even have to get on 55 to go to the super target. They can be on 540, they can get to the, the Publix or the Harris Teeter or whatever we end up having here, and they can get right back out on 55, or right back out on 540 and Highway 1. And they can leave this community and go where they need to. I think this is a unique opportunity, and I think that the placement of how we've put the, the commercial in here is advantageous, not only to the community owners that live there, but also to the people that are surrounding it.
Other questions?
David, I love your enthusiasm and the team in looking at the vision of this. And I think talking to residents, they also have the, the excitement around the Iceplex. And I'm looking over here at the folks here with the Iceplex, the commercial mix. What I'm, what I'm struggling with a little bit is what the vision is and what the contract says. And I think there's a, a difference of, there could be things that happen right now. Unless there's another contract, I don't see, you had talked about age, age targeting homes, because we had talked about that, there's, that's, the wording's not there. We talked about the open spaces, the wording's not in this, what I'm seeing. The commercial is significantly less than what you guys have just presented. So the, this piece of paper, in terms of what I'm looking at the chart, does not match what you just said. So that's what I'm, I'm struggling with is, I, I guess the intent, but how do we maybe come more in the middle?
Well, to be quite honest, the problem is, is that in order to make this development happen, this is not a one person, David, community. I can't make this whole thing happen, I have to have partners. This is a tremendous, this is hundreds of millions of dollars, okay? So I will tell you that with construction, you're probably looking at over half a billion dollars going into this. So we're going to need residential partners. And so for me to bring a residential partner in and tell them, hey, look, yeah, I'm going to bring you in, but if, after you build your 200th house, if we don't have a, you know, 100,000 square feet of retail, you can't build anymore. How do I sell that to anyone? I can't. I have my enthusiasm, I have my vision, I know where it's going to go, but I need, I can't be hamstrung. I can't be tied. My hands, if they're tied by you guys, I won't be able to succeed, because I can't convince the other people that do. And those people are dictated by Wall Street, not Main Street, okay? But what you have in me is you have someone that's Main Street, I'm here. And I'm, I think I'm the best conduit between me and those people to help make this happen. You know, we build 150 houses a year at Shenandoah, we've built 1,000 apartments over the last three years, okay? So we're, we're good, medium sized people, but we, this is a development that's going to need more than just me. It's going to need probably three or four different partners, including the Iceplex. And could be even more than that. And if every one of them I go to and say, oh, well, by the way, you know, after your 300th house, if I'm not performing on the Iceplex and it's not completed yet, because we have delays associated with God knows what, you know, another hurricane in Florence, or whatever it is, I'm just saying, then, then I won't be, I, I will, I will lose before I even get started. So it's not a, it's not a, an intent to hoodwink the council by showing a lesser requirement than what we're, what our vision is. It's that we have to have some amount of freedom so that we can bring these partners on.
But there's a, there's a, you have to set a minimum somewhere so that you can manage risk. That's really concerning to me, because I'll tell you, just haven't been through a lot of these things. I'll be honest with you, the square footage that's kind of being promised in the IRA at certain points is a lot. Because the last thing anybody in this room wants is an empty commercial building sitting there. That's much worse than a pad that's ready for somebody to come in and build what they actually want. The last thing you want is an empty commercial building. And, and you know, and David, tell them we're on, but I mean, I'll tell you, one of the things that's really made this such a home run is, is the Iceplex. And the Iceplex is going to really, I mean, I don't think you're going to have any problem getting some commercials going on here. I mean, as David talked about, they already are talking to people about hotels. I mean, the, the, the square footage that I believe is in the new IRA that we're talking about is basically that shopping center. That's a lot. That's a lot of square footage we promised and holding up phases of homes to get to. I mean, that's basically the equivalent of that shopping center. And that's not, excluding the Iceplex, and the hotel, the hotel technically would count on that, but I mean, you're probably getting a hotel too, I mean, you're.
140,000 square feet is, is the, is the equivalent of a Walmart super center and everything outside of it.
There won't be a Walmart super center here.
There won't. I'm just telling you how big they are.
They've got one of those.
But I'm just telling, I'm telling you how big that is. That is a tremendous amount of space.
So what about some of the other things? And, and I want to work with you, so I'm trying to figure out how do we bridge this? Because the other side is that you do the minimum and we don't have, you know, which is different than what we're hearing. So what about things?
Well, let's actually, I'll touch on one thing with that. So the minimum was 140,000.
With 90%.
And 60,000 square feet, right? 20, or whatever, 20,000 square feet in the Village Square. Because also, we have to have that. So we have to find someone in there for that.
She's referring to the IRA.
Well, I know, but they're still requiring the PUD to have a square footage in the Village Square.
Yeah, that's.
So that's. I mean.
So I, I hear you about needing something for you to be able to, to sell. So what about the age, what's the word they use? Age targeting?
Yeah.
Age targeting, you talked about 40 acres of open space, like none of that language is in here, but wouldn't that?
That's all, that's all imposed. Well, except for the age targeted, I believe we're not allowed.
No, we're not allowed.
We can't do age restricted.
We can't, it's not.
We can do age targeted. So age restricted is a deed restriction that is not allowed for your requirements. But that being said, the, the, the ability to build age targeted is here. And I can tell you that I've already talked to three apartment developers, and every one of them wants to put an age targeted spot here. Now, we also do apartments. I would build an age targeted apartment here, complex here as well. I think trying to mandate that in a PUD, I'm not even sure, I, I would feel very uncomfortable mandating that we put age targeted infrastructure in a community. I don't, I don't know, that, then it's, you start into, it's not market, it's, it's, you know, I don't know how, how you do that. I get commercial versus residential. I can tell you that our intent, 100%, because it's in this plan, this L-shaped community right here is 168 age targeted.
That's probably a closer, a couple hundred.
Covered 200, age targeted apartments. And here's, here's what I'll tell you, that, that is, that aids the community. I mean, so when you have people that live, I can't tell you how many of our other communities, where I've sold a house to a daughter and a, and a son in law, that their parents are moving, not next door, because they would, they, they decided that wasn't a good idea, but maybe 10 doors down, right? So my point is, is that this is 100%. I mean, my mom went from, from a, a house that I grew up in to an apartment. Now, it's not age targeted, but that's, that's something, something close to me, that's what I want, you know? And, and I think that's an absolute aid. So I, I don't, you know, I would feel very hesitant to try and put something like that in the PUD, but I'll tell you that I can almost guarantee you that we're going to end up doing something like that. Because I think in a community of this size, it'll be necessary.
In some sense, that right there was one of the original things that was looked at with this, was this being an age targeted.
Actually, that was, that was the original.
That just shows you how viable.
The original plan, when we came in, was we wanted an age restricted community. So.
So I think that just shows that the market.
There's, there's market for it and it will be there, I would not be concerned about that.
So I am concerned about the question about open space, because that's definitely in the PUD.
So.
There's 39.2 acres required to be developed open space. That's, that's the, 10% right? 10%. And then there's 100 acres in there that will be open space. So 100 acres total, 40 acres of that is going to be developed, plus there's 25 acres of town park. And that's just, that's a lot. We need to start looking at the percentage of it. That's a lot. That's all in the PUD, that's all required.
More questions? Yes?
Uh, one for Mr. Stevenson on the TIA. Did you guys look at the bridge on old Holly Springs Apex Road coming down from Woods Creek? It narrows pretty tightly. Did you guys take a look at that or assume that in your?
I believe, if I understand correctly, I think that's planned to be taken care of. But what we were looking at, I think this may be going to the point of, how much traffic is it going to take to cause that to be needed? Is that kind of where, okay?
It's needed now.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I can provide, um, we've talked to DOT and that project will be bid February of 2020. So less than a year away. That bridge will be replaced.
You're off the hook, sir.
Yeah, thanks.
There you go. Other questions?
We're good at this point?
Good at this point?
We can have further discussion after the open was.
Yeah.
For now, yeah. It's up to you. So the 25 acres that's being donated for the park, correct, to the town?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
And four-ish acres for a fire station?
Four acres?
Oh, Ed.
Yes, correct.
Fire station is being dedicated to the town, but it's not a donation. It will, it will, it will be in the IRA, it actually comes as a, a donation, and we get the write-off for it and fees.
The land.
The land, yeah.
Correct?
Yes, the land.
Right, just want to clarify that, okay.
So how confident about, are you about the Ice Complex moving forward?
Very. We're in to the point where we're trading paper. I mean, obviously, tonight really determines a lot of it, right? So all of us have been waiting for this, you know, to, to this date, the Iceplex and their group has dedicated resources to this site specifically, okay? But until tonight, there's a limit to which anyone's willing to spend, but a certain amount of money. So I'll tell you, I, I have spent a lot, so, but, but this point is where we need to, we need, the rubber hits the road.
Right.
I think just to follow up on that, I did spend some time with the generals here tonight, and we went through the whole presentation. I found one of the more exciting things I've ever seen, as far as hearing things like 3,000 kids are looking, or yeah, 3,000 in our town are looking for a place for ice. But then I remember hearing from a lot of the people who live here that their kids who play hockey have to go sometimes downtown to the Iceplex downtown at 4:00 AM in the morning. I found that unbelievable, but it's true, they're, they're that busy. So just point of reference, I just found that very exciting and very important to this whole project, in my mind.
I agree, it's, it is exciting, love to have it. I just know, as you say, so many curveballs can come that can, you know, stop these things dead in their tracks. And that's what we're really worried about. This is a huge, huge residential, you know, site. And we just want to make sure that these things, to make this a community, are going to happen. And I know, and that's, and that's what you want, and I know that's what you want, but it's very, when you can't have it in writing, in a couple of years down the road, who knows what council will be here then, or whatever. There's just, for me, I was looking for things that will protect us and that will, when we share a vision, I just want to really see that happen.
So first, let me tell you this, the things that you're referring to are things that are outside of MAC control, right? These are things that affect global macroeconomic issues in the United States and other places. The second thing I'll tell you is the same thing that I tell landowners that I'm potentially purchasing land from in order to create a community like this. This is, this is, there is a certain element of trust associated with all of these things. And every time you guys approve a piece of property, whether it be rezoning or a site plan or what have you, you're putting a certain amount of trust in that corporation or that individual to come through and follow through with what he said he's going to do. The problem with this for you is, is that it's a big one, okay? Okay? So this is the whopper, this is the, the, the double whopper, okay? And I understand that. Um, but I will tell you that we've worked very hard to get to a point where we have real opportunity, okay? And it's not just the Iceplex and the hotels and the residential. All of this is such a big piece. All of these things have to come together. Um, and I'll tell you, we're never closer than we are right now. We're this far. And I need you guys to take that leap of faith with me. And I know it's a leap, but it's, it's, it's what it is. If, if we, if you put more restrictions on me, uh, I won't be able to sell it, okay? And I need to be able to sell this to other partners that work with me. And I really tell you, we've got so much momentum. We had a wonderful joint council meeting. We had an eight to zero vote on the public planning board. We've got the people from the Iceplex involved. Uh, Mr. McLaughlin has wonderful donors and investors that are looking to put this money to you, to work in Holly Springs. And it would be an absolute shame if we weren't able to be able to do this. We, we are, we are all very excited. We want to keep that momentum and we want to keep it going. I mean, that school across from Woods Creek Road without Carolina Springs, you have the school and then you're that's fine and that will fund a lot of people or will provide schooling for people at Twelve Oaks and everything else. But when you combine it with the park that's gonna be across the street, the residential, the commercial, you know, the, the, the retail, the opportunities, the places to go, you know, have a, a, a lunch or a dinner with your friends and colleagues. I mean, it's just, it's right here. We're this close. We need y'all to help.
Go ahead.
Do you, do you have, I mean, God forbid, something happened, the Iceplex didn't happen. Do you have any other ideas what you would, would you just continue the, uh, kind of that village effect or?
A one hundred percent. Yeah, I mean, there's a, the, the plan will not change, whether the Iceplex goes there or not. The plan will not change. I mean, the urban feel that we're trying to create is what brings that retail to the location, okay? And that urban feel is, um, it's the feel in the pictures that you saw before. It's that, you know, it's the feeling that there you go, right? I mean, that's that feeling that's created. And the things that I know we can, we can fill would be the service providers, the restaurants, right? The apartments we can do, right? Those apartments are gonna create, they all want to have, have that sense of place. Um, and almost all of our communities, that's what, that's where you, what we need. And this commercial component is part of it. Now, the Iceplex obviously gives it a huge boost. And all of a sudden, you know, we're able to sign up some major, you know, people, you know, as far as res, uh, restaurants, retail, commercial, you know, office. I mean, those things, they feed off of each other. Um, it's a snowball, it's no, it's a snowball going downhill. We gotta get to the hill. I'm almost to the hill.
So David, if we, um, we move forward tonight, how long do you think that within six months, will you be like six months, two years, like when, when will you say, I had what I needed to sell and now here's the, the vision?
Oh, it'll be quick, it'll be soon. So I can tell you that we're already in conversations. We'll have a, a, one or two strategic partners in addition to the Iceplex picked out, both residential and commercial within three weeks. That's already been in the works. I've already had, we've got thirty some different partners that we're talking to about helping us create this. That's been in the works for almost a month. I need
Three weeks?
I would tell you in three to four weeks. I'm sorry, we're gonna have partnerships that we're gonna pick to move forward with. So we'll have residential developers that we're moving forward. Now, as far as what it's gonna look like, okay? We've got to go through site plan. We've got to get, we got to get the sewer in place, okay? But the vision will starting to come together then. Okay, because we'll know who we're gonna be working with. We'll know what the prod, what the, 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 the townhomes are gonna start to look like, right? We're gonna know what the houses are gonna start to look like. We're gonna know, um, what the density is gonna look like, all those things. Because some of this density can shift. But like I said, the, the partner, partners that we'll work with, with commercially and residentially, I'm already that, I'm way, way ahead of you on that one. And we are close. I mean, we'll, it'll, it'll happen in several weeks. We'll be talking, uh, to the finals and then within a month or within two months, we'll have the group picked out that we're gonna work with. And then I would say our first phasing site plan, um, we'd like to have in within five months.
Five?
Yeah.
He's laughing.
No, I'm talking about in our first, our first run of the site plan. I don't think, there's no reason why we can't do that. I mean, because we already have a, a site plan now, but talking about what comes first, I mean, yeah, we're gonna be, there's, nothing's gonna slow us down.
So David, are you, I'm sure you're aware of our revision, uh, planning that we're doing.
Yes, ma'am.
When you talk about what townhouses will look like or the character, are you incorporating some of those concepts? It's not finalized now, but is it something that you can share with them?
Well, there will be a, a master architecture plan that will be done before
Yeah, but they haven't, see, and I understand exactly your point.
It would have to touch on that.
So you, you have that coming, right? And we don't have privy to it now. But I will tell you that we will absolutely work with you on those things to, to, when you guys have it done and completed, we'll be able to work with you to make that, to work with the town.
Because it will have character feel. I mean, I think we're aligned, but they might have some, some specifics to around what we're looking at.
Last week, when the resident, we had a resident come up and speak, um, Ziddern, hold a comment about that she'd like to see more character and things like that within these developments that come.
On architecture?
Yeah. So it's got, you know, just something to consider.
Well, I will tell you that, uh, it is for sure, this is the not the last time that we're gonna be talking about all this together. I think we're gonna be, this is gonna be a long, a long partnership that, um, that we'll make every effort to make in official on both sides.
David, we're so close to Highway One right there, this project.
I'm sorry, is that one more time?
We're so close to Highway One right there.
Yes, sir.
Have, have you spoken to DOT to potentially, whether it's today or in the future, is that a consideration to build an off-ramp there for folks to get in and out there? I mean, that would be advantageous for, you know, those that are traveling to Raleigh.
I'm turning this over to Rem and Kip, but I know what you're saying. I can tell you that there is one planned on Friendship.
Yeah, there certainly, there certainly is one being discussed at, and looked at at Friendship and US One. But it's really, if you think about it, there's not, something like this will be a big driver towards, you know, creating the need for that sooner rather than later. So, um, you know, tra, transportation infrastructure always lags behind. You know, it's always sort of reactive. But, you know, a development like this will create the need for, for, maybe to accelerate that.
Have you looked at it or?
No, we, we have not studied it, uh, no, sir. So we, so what we had, we did not consider that in the traffic study. So I would say, you know, when that happens, it's just another relief valve, uh, for
I think that would be a big relief valve there if we had that type of connection there, especially folks that are going downtown Raleigh that can just jump on back there. Oh, oh, okay.
Well, I didn't mean that.
No, that's good.
Because we've talked about this, it's not a big secret. Or a small secret.
So right now, on the approved comprehensive transportation plan, there is an interchange planned at Friendship close to the certified site. Um, DOT, we've met as well as meeting with the town of Apex to coordinate because where we want to interchange, it also has to match up to, you know, Apex will be that fourth leg to the north. And they're planning for it to be at Friendship as well. Um, DOT has guidelines for how close interchanges can be to one another. And so with one of them being placed at New Hope-Holloman by the Duke plant and then 540, there's only room for one interchange and that's at Friendship. Um, so as Mr. Stevenson was talking about, as the property develops in and around US One, it might accelerate the need for that interchange. Um, but it was not, this size development was not triggering a need for an interchange at Friendship. But just to know that that is on the plan and, um, when we actually, we had somebody looking at the certified site, we were talking with DOT about the construction of that interchange. So it's, it's on there.
Okay, thank you. Just for the record, I get a call almost every week from a particular gentleman, his name was one mentioned, who talks about this, is when are you gonna do that? When are you gonna do that? So just for the record, I'm not gonna tell you today's. I think, I think the, the point that I hear from this whole thing reminds me of some times that back in the days when I had to sell something to somebody and didn't have every answer down pat, every, every T cross and every, and somebody in the audience said, we're gonna go with this on a leap of faith. So I gotta quote you on that, that there's a little bit of that here. But overall, in my opinion, what a, what an exciting project. Uh, what have we missed? Board, I think applicants are here. You good for now?
Yeah, the only, um, in terms of the contracts going back and forth, what we're reviewing, there's been changes even today. So what, what are we actually approving tonight? Do we have time to tighten some of this up with some of the questions or?
So the infrastructure reimbursement agreement deals with, um, and there's a, there's a slide on it after the, the PUD. Um, we, we don't want to confuse zoning issues with con, contract issues. Um, so you want to look at this PUD completely and separately by itself. But, um, from a land use approval perspective, the infrastructure reimbursement agreement, um, it talks about, uh, giving back to the developer, uh, a maximum amount of one point seven million dollars in, um, sewer, uh, fees that he would pay, um, or, or the development would, would accrue, um, in exchange for his construction of the pump stations and force mains to serve the development. Um, if at total buildout, um, uh, the, the, the fees paid could approximate about thirteen million dollars for just the residential and then, then whatever commercial, um, you know, would go into your, uh, water and sewer reserves, uh, serve the development. The, um, as part of that, the developer has agreed to consent to, um, withholding some residential permits based on the, um, phasing of the timing of the commercial. And those percentages did, were sort of dynamic, uh, this week, uh, particularly today. Um, where, so in the agenda packet, the, the, um, uh, thresholds were at twenty five percent, fifty percent and six, sixty five percent and a hundred percent, um, for different, um, for a, a maximum required non-residential, excluding the Iceplex of sixty thousand, and that's what was in your agenda packet. Um, with some renegotiation with the developer this week, um, he's consented to the, the tick marks being at twenty five percent, fifty percent, seventy five percent and ninety percent, where at twenty five percent, there's really no residential, non-residential requirement. When he gets to twenty five percent, he has to plan on the first forty thousand, excuse me, twenty thousand square feet of, uh, non-residential space. Um, at fifty percent, he has to have that twenty thousand completed and plan for an additional forty thousand square feet. At seventy five percent, he has to have that sixty thousand done and plan for the next eighty. And then at ninety percent, he has to have a full one forty of non-residential, uh, a hundred and forty thousand square feet of non-residential, uh, uh, space. Um, yeah. So, um, that's, that's sort of the, uh, last draft of the agreement that we left, um, this morning with, um, so the agreement does talk about the reservation of the fire station site that's shown on the PUD, about four point three acres. And that, um, we're going to have appraised, once that site is platted and, and formulated, we're have that appraised. And then the developer would get general fund fee credits, uh, for the, for that appraised amount. And that would cover, um, non-water sewer related fee, uh, fees that, that the development would, uh, would be required to pay. Um, the development's also dedicating twenty five acres of, um, a park site and, and constructing a greenway that is, um, between a mile, a mile and a half in length, depending on where it starts and where it ends. But we wanted the start of this development and the end at around the Twelve Oaks area. Um, the cost of, uh, the, those two parks and rac amenities will offset the, um, the parkland fee requirement, uh, but it won't be a hundred percent offset. They'll still be, um, the developer and will, will eventually then start paying parks and rec fees where the, um, the builders in, in the development will again, will start paying parks and rec fees as well. So, um, without my slide in front of me, that's the best I can remember on that. Spring Restructure Reimbursement Agreement, it'll, it'll come up in this PowerPoint again and
Counselor, I just have one question on that pertaining to the zoning ordinance itself. So if, the way I understand it correctly, the applicant has added that table for non-residential and residential into their PUD documentation, so that would be our zoning ordinance, right? So it would be amended to the most current version. And should Mr. Stallings decide to retire to Aruba and another developer picks this up, there's assignment rights within that contract, but also it would be memorialized within the zoning ordinance. So any other developer that comes along later down the road would have to abide by the same non-residential residential requirements as it relates to the building, the building permits, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. That page seventy five of the PUD document needs, part of your approval tonight, were you to do it, um, would be to approve the PUD subject to page seventy five being, um, amended to reflect the, the new, the new table that we agreed on.
Thanks.
So David, um, looking at these numbers, twenty sixty, I get that. What do you think commercial you'll have by fifty percent of residential? What is, what is your
Please, please ask a question.
Like how much commercial do you think we'll have at, at fifty percent buildout? What is your dream? Do you think about Iceplex like?
I, I can't answer that, ma'am. It's just, that is a, that is a loaded question that I honestly, I mean, I, I mean, I, I, there's no way I could even answer it. I mean, I have dreams, we all do.
Yeah.
Right? The other thing, just commenting on Aruba, usually the, the first guy goes bankrupt. The second guy takes it over and then he goes to Aruba.
Well, we don't want you
Try to take an optimistic outlook for you.
I'm with you, buddy.
We're taking the leap.
I'm with you, I'm with you, I'm with you.
That's right. Any other questions to the applicants at this point? In case the audience wonders if we've been working on this for a while, this is just the last week or so of emails. So I think the interest is obvious. Uh, details are a big part of what we've been talking about tonight. We had a lot of questions and that's fine, because this is not a small, this is not a small kind of thing in our town. No. And so I, I think at this point in time, are you okay with the applicants at this point? Yes? Yes? Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, we're gonna reopen the public hearing. And again, no one has signed up, but is there anybody here that, uh, would have signed up if they had the chance? It's an unusual question. We normally don't do this. I don't see anybody. So we'll again, close the public hearing. Further discussion, our questions of Sean, Melissa, Rachel, et cetera. Or are we kind of done? Open. Good? Good?
At the end of the day, this is a risky project. I think we've probably put as much risk on Dave and his crew as possible. And I appreciate staff and especially fellow council members for driving that and, and also trying to minimize risk to the town as this is a, a huge project. Um, it's been a lot of work and two plus years of back and forth and, and dedication. So it's, it's not a fly-by-night or a hail mary or anything like that. I think it's been a very, um, two-way conversation with, uh, with all of us.
I'm gonna start looking for my hockey skates. I think I still have them someplace if they fit. Anyway, I'll get insurance too. Um, anything else for Sean at this point?
Not for Sean, but just in general, I, you know, some, some comments that I have over, you know, I've, I've had the luxury of being part of this process from my time on the planning board till now. So over the past eighteen months, as long as that's been, you know, I've seen this three times at the TRC. I've seen it through the planning board. I've seen it all the way through here. So it's, it's been a ride and I can vouch for the, uh, the pain and agony that Mr. Stallings and his team have, have been through to get to this point. And I think it's quite, quite an accomplishment from where we were to where we are now. Um, over the past eighteen months, I think we as a board have, have encouraged developers to bring forward concepts that are unique. I think this project really defines unique, especially for what we've been asking for in Holly Springs. It brings a balanced tax base, large drivers for economic value to our community. I do think with a few changes, this project could easily fit into the constraints of our UDO. But after the, the time I've spent going through this, conversations with the team, conversations with staff, I understand the applicant's desire for a PUD. I do think that increases the likelihood I do think that increases the likelihood that this project is completed as it's intended. Our UDO does two things. It says we don't really want to see any PUDs and we don't really want to see any split zone, zone parcels. And in this scenario, we'd have one of those two options. I think the PUD is probably the more appropriate concept for what we're trying to achieve here. You know, there's, there's also several mixed uses for the, and the ability for the developer to be flexible to achieve their desired outcome. And as Mr. Stallings talked to, I think we have to meet him halfway there in order to afford him that flexibility to, to get there and accomplish the vision. I did solicit input and received a lot of good positive sentiment from folks, even as close as 12 Oaks to this project. I will say that most are very excited about the iceplex. That seems to be the biggest driver of excitement in town. And even when I said, you know, how many homes are coming with it too, there was a lot of shoulder shrugging. And I, I quite frankly was kind of surprised by that. But I've got at least 25 different notes on conversations I've had with people about that, which is, which is good. The only other thing I, I would add is we made some changes to our future land use plan eight months ago, whatever it was, where we changed up some of the zoning characterizations and removed what we called community growth areas. And one of the reasons I supported that at the time was we don't really have a good example of a successful one of those in our town. And the reason is we don't have all of these pieces put together to actually give us a community growth area. This is an opportunity to have a community growth area in and of itself come into this parcel and you achieve that right off the bat. That's much easily, much easier achieved through a PUD. And I think gives us that desired outcome of what we always thought we would get in our planning documents with community growth areas. Some of the other growth we've had hasn't quite amounted to that. This gives us an opportunity to, to see something like that come to fruition. And then lastly, the non-residential requirement I think was quite innovative for a project like this. I'm sure the development team could attest to that. I too thank Mr. Stallings and his team for coming to the table and working on the non-residential residential mix so we could have the balance we need for our tax base and for the success of what we're trying to achieve as a town. Even this week when we, we went back and had some changes that were done to that. So thank you. That was one of my major concerns and that being achieved, I think at this time, I'm inclined to support the project.
Thank you, Dan. Any other comments or questions? Sean? Sean? If not, we might be at that point. Yes?
As I say, I, Dan, like you, I've spoken to many people and, and it is the iceplex that people are pretty excited about. But the concept of mixed use and, and the, the, the community feel and hanging out by the fountain, I mean, that, people are really excited about that because we're bringing in a lot of people. I mean, 1,700 homes, what, at least 5,000 people, maybe 3,400 car. I mean, it's, it's a major part of our town that's going to be added. But the concept of having it all into one community, I think is exciting and folks were pretty excited about it. I just wanted to make sure, I, I, I believe in leaps of faith. I'm just trying to make sure that we protect our, our residents, that if, if something happens, what is it that we're making sure that we are doing the right balance of residential and commercial? Because we, we know we have to change as a town and we want to get closer to 70, 30. So the leap brings us there, I believe.
And David, you had mentioned this project was a 10-year project, right? Roughly?
Yeah.
For the most part, folks that are on this board, we probably won't be here. We're trying to do what's right for the next board.
I know.
And that's why, that's why, that's why, you know, we ask these questions and we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, right? You know, from transportation and, and, you know, what this vision of yours, it's, it's impressive. I wish we could just, you know, blink our eye and it's here right now. And, and it's hard for people to see, you know, a vision that's going to take 10 years. But, you know, based on what you had demonstrated today and, and, you know, I'm in support of we're moving forward.
And don't forget the discussion about hotels or a hotel. That's not a bad idea either. Just, just a thought, you know, my personal feeling. All right, let's go to motions. Motion number one. Who wants to tackle?
I'll make the motion to approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment Resolution 1917 and Resoning Ordinance 19RAZ01 to approve the rezoning of 396 acres of Wake County PIN 0730634462, portion of further described in Resolution 1917 and Ordinance 19RAZ01 and 0740032625 from LB Local Business, R20 Residential and R30 Residential to Plan Unit Development District, thereby changing the future land use plan designation of the above listed parcels from business park to mixed use.
Second?
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passing unanimously, number two.
Motion to approve, deny, defer, motion to approve Plan Unit Development Master Plan 18-PUD-01 for Carolina Springs with conditions stated in the packet and additional condition below. Modify non-residential phasing listed on PUD master plan page 75 in accordance with terms outlined in the proposed IRA.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passing unanimously, number three.
So this is sort of a, the next flowing, uh, uh, once you, now that you've approved the zoning, the land use.
Correct.
This is a infrastructure reimbursement agreement that we talked about. And so on your screen is, is basically what I said earlier.
We need a motion on this?
Yeah, there's a, next one should be a motion to approve.
There it is.
Motion to approve the infrastructure reimbursement agreement in association with the Plan Unit Development Master Plan 18-PUD-01 for Carolina Springs.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Sean. Good work, you guys.
It's all right, David. It's gonna be all right.
Come back, David, in a month and tell us all those good news.
Hey, David.
Russ, come back and talk to us too.
Go start at church. Congratulations. Take care, Russ. Agenda item 8A, consent agenda, Mayor Portem.
Uh, motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. Second.
Motion made second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. Okay, agenda item 9A, new business, Board of Adjustment midterm appointment. Gina Klepp, hi.
Hi, yes, good evening. Gina Klepp, Director of Planning and Zoning. And we are here this evening for filling a midterm vacancy for a regular in-town member on our Board of Adjustment. Our current member resigned in a couple of months ago. We've done some advertising and we received one application for the in-town regular member. The application we received was Morgan Wiley. She was recently appointed as an alternate in-town member. And the vacancy that we have is a term ending next February 29th, 2020. So if you choose to appoint her from the alternate into the in-town regular member position, well then advertise to fill the alternate member.
Gina, I just, just noticed this and you did not get a copy. Most of us did. From Molly Sapienza, just so you know.
I did not receive that.
I don't think you saw it. Did anybody, everybody should have gotten it. Was it Parks and Rec? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, unfortunate. Long day. Never mind. Tomorrow. Comments?
I support that.
Support?
Yeah.
Need a motion?
Motion to appoint Morgan Wiley as in-town regular member of the Board of Adjustments to fill the remainder of a term ending February 29th, 2020. Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passing unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. We will give her the good news tomorrow.
All right. Thank you, Gina. Okay, here we go. 10A, Development Plan 18DP15 Lowes Home Improvement slash Wegmans. Sean, I think you're back. Yes, you are.
Yes, so this agenda item tonight is to evaluate some modifications that are being proposed to the Greenway location behind the Lowes and Wegmans project that the Town Council approved at their last meeting. And then after the discussion tonight, there will be a motion to make a decision on an option for that Greenway alignment. Just to refresh your memory, this is the project location, located at the southwest corner of GB Alfred NC 55 Bypass and Ralph Stevens Road, adjacent to and in front of the Wildwood subdivision. Just as a quick refresher, as I said previously, the Town Council did approve the development plan and associated waivers for this project back on April 16th. However, the Council requested additional options for the Greenway location along the backside of the project, along the north side of the Wildwood subdivision. Four different options have been evaluated by Town Staff and Town Staff did meet yesterday afternoon with representatives from the neighborhood. With that, I will invite our Parks and Recreation Director up to go through the different options that have been evaluated.
Welcome, Leanne.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. First, I want to thank you for your, your time to examine this in-depth and difficult decision and wanting to serve the residents of the Wildwood community, whose properties are in close proximity to this new commercial development. I also appreciate the challenge that you have given to staff to do the same when it came to examining the Greenway location. The Greenway was not recommended to penalize those residents, but to actually align with the town's overarching objectives from the strategic plan, the comprehensive transportation plan, and the beyond the Greenways master plan to provide Greenway connectivity and in particular, connecting neighborhoods to points of interest such as parks, excuse me, parks and retail areas. The considerations before you tonight are not arbitrary, but are really part of the vision for a comprehensive Greenway for the town as a whole. I think at the last meeting, there was some uncertainty about where the connections in the Greenway led. And so I just want to remind Council that the Greenway development in the, in the town is like a puzzle. We've got certain segments that have been built or certain pieces. And over time, as we continue to build these segments, we'll have a completed master plan Greenway. So I want to show you where we are today in the Wildwood community. The section to the west will come up to Ralph Stevens Road along a 10-foot wide side path or a street side trail, which plans to connect to Morgan Park, ultimately to the Utley Creek Greenway, which will go under the underpass at 55, through Avant Ferry Acres, and then into downtown Holly Springs. The connection to the east will, while, while we're waiting for the adjacent development to the east, it'll also provide a crossing at a, as a signalized intersection, linking Pecan Grove to the Carl Dean Greenway and ultimately to Bass Lake Park. Further opportunities to the south includes alignment with the Fuquay Varina Greenway, aligning with Hilltop Needmore Road to the east and ultimately to Bass Lake Park. I also want to talk about the suggested connection to the east off Ralph Stevens. I think this was made by the community at one of the last meetings. And while that certainly is a connection, we can go east on Ralph Stevens to Teal Lake Road and crossing over to the Carl Dean Greenway. The downside to this route is that it utilizes five-foot side sidewalks and not a true Greenway. And if you remember, if Holly Springs is committed to developing a Greenway network, we need to limit the substitution of sidewalks for Greenways and reserve sidewalks as a complement to the Greenway system, not as a primary connector. So what I want to do is kind of take you through some options that were, that were shared by the Lowes developer in looking at relocating the Greenway. Option A is the same design that you saw at the April 16th meeting, which include, which included the Greenway here behind the Wegman section with a approximately five-foot landscape buffer, the 10-foot Greenway, and then an additional 20-foot landscape buffer before you hit the 10-foot high fence into, into the developed property area. One of the other sections of option A included combining the access road as well as the Greenway to move it away from the residential property. Option B, this doesn't let me move this very easily. Hold on. Option B removes the Greenway entirely from the site. This does preserve the 35-foot landscape buffer. And one of the things I wanted to mention is the property lines in all these scenarios, scenarios do not change. You have approximately 35-foot buffer and you have the same amount of landscape material. What does change is the density of the landscape material depending on where the Greenway is located. In option C, we have parts one and two. So this first section is relocating the Greenway approximately eight feet north behind the Wegman section. In doing so, this actually increases the elevation of the Greenway, but it also increases the landscape, the landscape width in this section to 13 feet. Then you have the 10-foot Greenway and then you have an additional 12 feet of landscape buffer in this area. On this lower section, we have heard from the residents and we've recommended moving this Greenway to the abandoned dirt road that is about 35 feet north of what the existing proposed Greenway location was. Also, Council asked us to look at what was the original comprehensive transportation plan route. And we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting. This section of the Greenway hugs the Lowes property to the east and as you can see, is aligned with steep slopes, as well as quite a bit of wetland areas. There are also a lot of large trees in this area that would be affected by putting a Greenway in this location. But the main reason that this location was not recommended was due to this crossing from the entryway coming from 55. We feel that that's a dangerous crossing for pedestrians or cyclists that would be coming across along the Greenway. So those are the considerations. I want to open the discussion if you have any questions.
First question I have is, is what are your thoughts from staff standpoint and which is the best option and why?
I think there's a hybrid option that you should consider, which would be part of option A, which is that western section in this area here to kind of keep this Greenway. What it does is it does have a five-foot landscape buffer here, but it also has this 20-foot HOA easement that could be planted more densely in order to provide more of a visual screen. What it does allow is for a very densely populated landscape buffer in this area at the highest elevation to help block out any light or noise. So using that section and then also combining it with section C2, which is moving this lower portion of the Greenway about 35 feet north to that abandoned dirt road.
So you're saying option A, C1, C2?
No, just option A and C2.
A and C2?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, when you're saying minimize for option A, minimize sound and light, you're talking about the commercial sound and light, not necessarily the Greenway sound.
Correct. I think what we heard from the community when we met with them yesterday was that the additional density on this higher elevation would be preferable. The additional density of the landscape material at that higher elevation would be preferable.
When you met with the community, were they, so who, who was there? Is it the homeowners that are adjacent or the HOA?
We had the HOA representative and one resident that is adjacent to one of the Greenway areas.
Other?
Yeah, on, you mentioned the 20-foot HOA buffer and that that could be more densely planted. Did you mean that buffer itself or did you mean the five-foot closest to that buffer? Explain that one more time for me.
Sure. So there's a 20-foot HOA easement that is owned obviously by the community. And there is some availability to do some additional planting by the community in that particular area. So that would not be necessarily part of this project, but it gives them some opportunity to plant some additional buffer. What they're getting from the developer is a more densely planted northern section at the highest elevation.
And C1 would push that Greenway up a little higher onto that elevation, basically splitting the buffer. So you'd have dense, but then a little dense below and a little bit dense higher. But you'd have the Greenway bisecting that through the middle at a higher elevation.
Correct. And also what that does is elevate the Greenway. So the, the Greenway is at a higher elevation as well, possibly looking, you know, having not, having possibly a view into neighbors' yards.
So if the town is recommending option A hybrid with C2, what did the, I mean, I think the residents, what was their? think the residents, what was their hierarchy of what they?
Their hierarchy was no Greenway. I think you heard that during public comment today. And there was some consensus if the council would to move forward with the Greenway, that they preferred option A and C2 as well.
Got it. That answers the question, I think. Yes?
One of the things we talked about last time, when we say no Greenway, we talked about if folks were using the sidewalk, they're saying like not at all. Is that, when you mean no Greenway, was that?
Who was saying that? No, I'm sorry.
Last thing we were talking about is like if they weren't, if we weren't having the Greenway in the back way, but we were using the sidewalks.
So sidewalks exist, but sidewalks are not Greenways. And so I think the concern is to really have both pedestrian and bicycle traffic for connectivity. Sidewalks should not be designated as primary Greenway sections, but more as connectors. So that is certainly an option, but that is not recommended for a true Greenway vision.
Okay. Other questions? Any or comments? Just to reiterate, you're talking option A and C2, correct?
Correct.
I think I got a thumbs up from somebody.
So C2 is that part that's already kind of cleared?
Correct. I believe it's an old road.
Okay. So you would just be shifting it north so that the Greenway would come down, that part that's already cleared, versus cutting through existing vegetation?
True.
So you'd keep that more as a buffer and then use an already cleared? Okay, I got it.
Can you go to that side?
Yep.
Thank you.
So we heard quite a few comments tonight in public comments. Some of them were about the size of the fence, things like that, which is outside this discussion. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe there's an additional side that Rachel's going to speak to about the fence.
Okay.
Yeah, originally it was eight foot and?
Fence?
Yeah, ten.
So these drawings, the supplemental drawings that Lowe's provided is a 10-foot high privacy fence.
Okay.
Have you heard what those Lowe's and Wegmans say? Do they have a preference?
I believe they're amenable to one of the three options that they submitted, option A, B, or C. Option D, which was the original path where we had the steep slopes and some of the tree issues, they were not amenable to that recommendation.
Okay.
A1, C2?
A1, C2. Sounds like the consensus. Any further comments on A and C2? A1, C2? Yes? Need a motion?
We gotta get through the gate first. Is it all together?
It's all good.
Yeah, let's do that first.
Are we ready for a motion or not?
Yeah, can we go back one slide?
I missed that.
So this is, Rachel, do you want to speak to the gate?
Thought you'd get out of this, didn't you, Rachel?
I know. I tried. So to address some of the other concerns that you heard this evening during the public comment period, as Leanne mentioned, we met with the residents yesterday and discussed this a little further. I think during the last meeting, there were concerns brought up about potentially looking at an acoustic material or just alternative materials for the gate that's being provided on the emergency access road. So staff was able to talk with our fire and rescue department and receive some information from those folks as far as their requirements and needs to be able to access what they need to safely and properly. We discussed in the previous meeting that that access road does need to stay open and usable for a secondary means of access for the Wildwood subdivision. And until a secondary access is built at one of the street stubs that is provided today, that emergency access road will have to remain open. So what's on the slide before you is a summary of what we received from the fire department. As far as the gate material requirements go, whatever material is chosen would have to meet the North Carolina Fire Code requirements. So any gate securing the fire apparatus access road would need to be constructed of a material that would allow a single person to manually operate the gate. In addition to that, a 20-foot minimum width is required to allow for the emergency vehicles to safely pass. They can be a swinging or sliding type gate. I'm not, I think currently what's shown is like the metal swinging gate. And the last item I just wanted to hit on was that any emergency opening device or the locking device used for the gate would have to be approved by the fire code official. So I think there's some flexibility as far as the type of gate used for this purpose. If the developer is willing to look at other options that might be more acceptable by the residents, then that might be something that could be a condition if desired by the council members tonight. The other item I wanted to touch on that's not shown on this slide, I think we heard during the public comment period, is, let me flip to a slide where we might be able to see this. So in this area where the access road is shown, we had spoken previously about the access easement being abandoned once this access road is not needed. So what would remain is the Greenway easement. So we would still have the 20-foot Greenway easement. Adam, or Leanne, it's 20 feet, correct? Okay. So that would remain, but the access easement today is 30 feet, so that would be abandoned. What the residents had brought to our attention is the fact that this area is left open, so there's no landscaping planned to be planted there today to allow for that access to remain. So I believe their desire is to request of the developer, if it's the desire of council, to request the developer to plant that area once this access road is abandoned, to close that gap and allow for a little more privacy in that area for the residents. I might ask Sean to speak to more of the landscaping requirements and how that would be enforced on our end if you have questions.
Yep. Questions? Nope. Thank you.
For Sean, I do, so we're going to ask the developer to maybe plant something 20 years down the road? I mean, do we know when that timing would be?
Yeah, the closing of the access road would be dependent on the adjacent property developing on either the east or west of Wildwood. So, you know, it's hard to say how long that would take. If it does become a condition of approval on these plans, then at the point of the time where it is closed, then it would be a zoning enforcement issue. We keep the plans on file in perpetuity of the project being in existence. So, and speaking with the neighbors, I think they're very aware of when that road is going to close, and they have assured us that they will be contacting us to make sure that that gets in. So I don't believe it would be an enforcement issue if that's the desire of the town council to request that that landscaping be filled in.
Have we done that before? And that kind of plan to say sometime in the future?
I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be so open-ended as sometime in the future because we would have a definitive point in time where it needs to go in. As soon as that access easement is abandoned, that would trigger compliance with that condition of approval. I can't think of any off the top of my head that have been so far out in the future without kind of an unknown time when that specific action would occur.
Is it kind of similar to what some of the older HOAs are going through with the replacements of vegetation and still having to abide by original zoning buffer?
Yes, exactly. So even though a project or a neighborhood might be 20, 25 years old, we still have approved landscaping plans on file that our zoning enforcement officer goes out and inspects for on a yearly or bi-yearly basis, or if a complaint is received. So we do perpetual maintenance on landscaping throughout the life of a project.
But if the HOA wanted to, you know, have bigger trees and shrubs, that's something they would come to the town, request some type of exception there?
So are you talking about in the area of the access road or just in general?
Yeah, so right there. Because what I've heard from the residents today that they want bigger sized trees there. And if the HOA is going to put them in, they're going to have to come to town council and request that.
So they wouldn't need to come to town council. So Wildwood subdivision was approved with a 20-foot type B40 semi-opague buffer. So essentially, what that resulted in was about two evergreen trees and a deciduous tree every 100 feet of property line that they have. That's what we inspect for as a minimum. If the HOA wants to add additional plantings to that area, they don't need to come in for town approval. They don't need staff approval. They don't need town council approval. They can supplement that buffer as they need. We would like to work with them to make sure that they're picking species that are appropriate, not invasive, and that will give them the desired screening that they're looking for. But they wouldn't need any additional town approvals to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Looking good? Back to the motion. What's the tackle?
So motion to approve modifications to the development plan, number 19-DP-15 for Lowe's Home Improvement Wegmans to incorporate option A, C1. Correct me if I'm wrong?
C2.
C2. So that's A, C2, with the conditions stated below.
Second? Hope they made a second all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Most impassionately, thank you. Just a comment. I've gotten more comments about Wegmans coming in. I think the stoplight at Lassiter, for those of you who remember that one. Everybody's very excited about that. Also, unfinished business before we get to management report. Crosswalk safety, still on my list. Every time we have a meeting, we talk about crosswalk safety. I actually walked across the street today in front of the hall, and two cars on the inside actually stopped. I was so thankful. Otherwise, I wouldn't be here tonight. So that's the good news. Board, any other ideas?
Well, this past Saturday at Station, Fire Station 1, we had a, remembering our fallen firefighters, specifically Paul Tidwell, who was a firefighter here. It was a motorcycle run. There was probably 100 bikers there. That was pretty impressive. The farmer's market, we just had a grand opening. That was well attended. It was pretty cool. And then Spring Fest, I think for the most part, we all were part of that. And it was a lot of work. And kudos to the chamber and the run club to pull this off. And it's just going to get better and better each year. So two good weekends in a row. That's it.
Not as much fun, but I'll add to what I have. With the new development that we just approved tonight, one of the things that came to mind is, remember we talked to the Wake County Commissioners about an app to maybe help with landfill smells? You saw those aerials, they're very close. Do you have any sense if that's moving forward for them to give us something better for us to report our new landfill issues?
Yes, I'd be happy to follow up a little bit more on that. I don't have a lot of details at this particular point, but I'll follow back up in a Friday briefing memo or some other form to get you a little bit more information. I know that the county just recently released their budget yesterday, and I don't have any details if capital funding was provided. I know that the solid waste, our partners with Wake County were requesting some additional capital funding for the app, and I just don't know if that was recommended or not formally.
They have two public hearings on that, too.
Same general topic. I'm still waiting for Sig Hutchison to come back at me on requesting some funding for Greenways. And he still sounds like he's positive.
They have two public hearings on their budget before they approve it on June 3rd, so that would be our opportunity to go down there and lobby for making sure that funding for that app is in there with a 10% tax increase. I'm sure they could find somewhere to give us a couple hundred thousand dollars for an app.
Well, I think we need to stress that, you know, we did have Commissioner's support for this, you know, the ice plex, everything. Well, that comes with even more need now for this app, that it's a necessity that we need to have. The other thing I want to mention is that I forwarded an email that we got from Mr. Simpson, who lives, a longtime resident downtown. And he was making a point, and this came up somewhat with Spring Fest. The residents downtown are not part of an HOA, so they kind of have to speak up for themselves. And some of the things that were being raised with the volume of detour with Spring Fest is like traffic on Raleigh Street. And I know I spoke to somebody that said years ago, all they did is pave over the dirt road that was on Raleigh Street. And if you guys spent any time on it, if you're there with another car or truck, I mean, you can't move. So I think when we're detouring a lot of people on a road that's not really wide, it's just something we need to consider is what are we doing to some of the existing infrastructure that might need some help. And similarly, parking downtown, I know that with the parking deck, we should see some really, however, it's an ongoing issue with folks that are parking in front of mailboxes and blocking folks' access to their homes. And I know if there's anything we can do to kind of step up, either paint and say, no, you cannot park close to a mailbox, or something to help. There's not very many homes, but it's something that we need to, we should consider.
There's not many homes, so it should be a little bit easier for us to keep an eye on. You know, I know it's happening even during the farmer's market when it used to be over there and things, so it will be.
So just some awareness that we might need to treat, look at these folks and think about, you know, how can we help them, given they don't have a big HOA voice.
No, thank you for that feedback. I appreciate that, and we'll certainly take that back. The other thing that I'll note is next year, assuming that, you know, we have the Springs Fest again, with Avant Ferry being open, that could change the routing and hopefully provide some reduced impact.
But still, the Christmas parade or the holiday parade, I mean, it does happen a fair amount where Raleigh Street is expected to be a full street when really it's not.
That's helpful feedback. Thank you. What else?
Since we were talking about Greenways a little bit tonight, I have one follow-up question. Back in February, I'd asked some questions around the Carl Dean Greenway and when that was anticipated to be reopened. And in my notes, I'd put down in May, depending on weather. Now, I know we've had a pretty wet winter and spring, but I don't, if Leanne's still here, I don't know if we have an answer to this tonight, or if not, follow-up is fine. But curious to know if we're still on track for the developer to complete their part of that in May. And if not, I'll have some other comments.
I'll let Leanne Plummer give a little update on that.
We have continued to stay in contact with the developer to determine when they will be completed. Right now, the latest update is mid-June. But we kind of touch base with them weekly to make sure that they are making progress.
So is there anything we can do in the future to not have this happen again? I mean, this was supposed to be done a year ago, and weather, whatever other acts of God that get in the way that, you know, get us to these situations. But we've had numerous events, you know, in town that have had to work around that Greenway and the fact that it's been closed. And it is, you know, one of the conversations that, you know, Leanne talked about earlier with her Greenway presentation is that a lot of the connections we have really aren't there. They're kind of different patches of Greenways that we're waiting for development to kind of build out and give us some, an actual Greenway system versus just a point that you go down, turn around, and go back the other way. That was one that actually had some connectivity to get you other places out around Bass Lake, Sunset Lake Road, Bass Lake Road. You know, what can we do in the future to kind of hold these developers accountable for making sure that these improvements are going to be made and there's not going to be a public sacrifice for not having the Greenway there for a year at this point, maybe longer? Yeah, I think I'd mentioned that before, but if we could follow up on what we have in our toolkit to maybe make sure this doesn't happen again, I think that would be, would be good.
Happy to.
Anything else?
I just have to put a little selfish plug here. This high school SWAC conference, we had, I think, four or five of our teams make it to the playoffs for women's soccer, including Holly Springs High School. They're playing Apex Friday night at home. And Apex Friendship, another one of our schools, just won their first round of the playoffs tonight. So, you know, if you want to see some good soccer, come on out. Also, the name just escaped me, but Wake FC now has a, it's similar to the Salamanders, it's a collegiate soccer team, women's soccer team. And they are, their first game is Saturday night at Ting at the stadium. So that should be kind of fun.
And Weaver said, try to be there by 6:30 maybe? Which I didn't know until today.
And trying to think. My other stuff was answered the bridge and all that stuff, so we're good. Oh, I know. Can we get a table of contents for our packets? I mean, we just, I just sit there and have to scroll through. We've been, you know, that kind of gives us an idea of where we are.
On the agenda packets?
Yeah, fill out the packet, because we have 300 pages.
That's a great idea.
Huh?
That's a great idea.
Yeah, you know, people are probably like, what is she doing? So that'd be great. Thank you.
To that, we will go- To that, we will go to item number 11, which is called the manager's report.
Jotting down my to-dos here, so.
We can wait.
This is great, no, that's good. Yeah, maybe four quick items, mayor and council, maybe five here. The first one is again, just to reiterate from a staff perspective, the thanks and appreciation to Christine Quantin, the chamber, and for the great work and also into the run club as well as the staff. A lot of staff effort went into this. Obviously, public safety, which you saw first and foremost out there on the street, but a lot of extra work from all departments in the town and real proud of their work. So great job to my colleagues. The second item, I wanted to recognize Kendra Parish. Recently, Kendra, at the April 15th, 2019 Board of County Commissioners meeting, they voted to appoint Kendra Parish to the Wake County Water Partnership. And so we're real proud of that, to have that representation coming from our town. So I want to congratulate Kendra. She's right around the corner there, so, on that appointment, so, by the Wake County Board of Commissioners. I also want to recognize Jeff Wilson, who recently received an award. It's called the 2019 Local Courage Award from the Coalition of Local Internet Choice Organization. And it's a national organization that's focused on ensuring local governments have the authority to retain decision-making authority. Critical broadband infrastructure matters. And maybe translated another way, that we as a community are working to have options for our residents in terms of their connectivity to broadband. And so I want to recognize Jeff and his leadership on that front. And they had the award ceremony in Austin, Texas, but he was not able to go, but he did receive it here in Raleigh here recently. So I want to congratulate Jeff, I think he's in the, is he in?
He's back then.
He's right back? There he is, great, good. The other thing that I know is a, maybe an old announcement, but we know that Daniel Pope, promoted him to our code enforcement director, and you all know that, but I failed to make a public recognition or acknowledgement of that. And so my apologies to Daniel, I do want to recognize publicly, for those watching, that Daniel Pope will be our new code enforcement director, responsible for ensuring that that commercial and residential construction adheres to the state building code as well as maintaining our minimum housing standards here in the town. So I want to recognize Daniel, he's been here for a number of years and was recently our, served as the interim director and before that, our senior lead inspector. So again, congratulations to Daniel. The last item on my list, I'm real excited about, is next Tuesday, we have the manager's recommended budget presentation. That will be in this room at 6:00 PM. And looking forward to that next Tuesday. And what is planned for that, we'll have a presentation where I'd like to outline for you all the core highlights of the recommended budget. And it's a chance for you to receive that. And then following that, the following Tuesday, I think that's the 21st of May, we have the public hearing. And then following that, on May 28th, will be a budget workshop where we'll dive into any particular question areas that you may have. So that's what the runway looks like, so to speak, for the next few weeks here as it relates to the budget. And look forward to seeing you next week to make that recommendation.
Are we going to record that next week, the budget presentation?
We will, yes.
For public?
And that's, yeah, that's why we'll do it up here.
Okay, thanks.
End it?
Great, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Counselor?
Nothing that can't wait.
You know what that means?
Most adjourned?
Second.
All favor?
Mayor and council, we have a closed session, a brief closed session this evening. On economic development. Yeah, sorry.
You know about that?
Yeah, for potential economic development partnership?
I don't, but.
So you have the, whatever the statute would be to make sure we can go?
Yeah, 143-318-11A4 for economic development.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?